13 stars on a blue field. The stars represented the colonies that declared independence in the years since they have grown into 50 United States, which compromises our great country today. And whereas on Flag Day and during National Flag Week, we celebrate the journey of progress represented in our banner and pay tribute to the inspiration it gives Americans at home and abroad. And whereas our flag belongs to all Americans, and its red, white, and blue colors are woven into the rich tapestry of different cultures, backgrounds, and beliefs which connect us and honor our shared legacy. And whereas from the Revolutionary War to the modern age, American service members have fought bravely under the symbol of our flag, and those who give the last full measure of devotion are wrapped in its broad stripes and bright stars as they are laid to rest. We honor those who serve our country in uniform and pay homage to those who have made that ultimate sacrifice. And whereas every day, the American flag still instills pride, reminding us of the ideals upon which our nation was founded and the values for which we stand. As we pledge our allegiance to the Star Spangled Banner and the legacy that it holds in our history, let us continue to work with the work of perfecting our union so that together we can deliver the promise of America, I'm sorry, the promise of America for all Americans. And whereas the Ketchikan City Council urges all Americans to observe Flag Day and National Flag Week by displaying the flag and honoring all our brave service members and helping those who gave their last full measure of devotion to our country. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dave Keifer, Mayor of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska, do hereby proclaim June 11th through 17th, 2023, National Flag Day, Flag Week and Flag Day, and encourage the people of the United States to observe with pride and all due ceremony those days from Flag Day through Independence Day. It's a time to honor the American spirit, to celebrate our history and the foundational values we strive to uphold, and to publicly recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America. Signed this first day of June, 2023.
Thank you so much for doing this. The key word here is the inclusiveness of everybody that falls under that flag. Thursday, there's Wednesday, sorry.
14.
Wednesday, the 14th. 11 o'clock will be Flag Disposal Ceremony, as we do every year. Anybody that wants to can join us. We'll have at least one representative from the Elks, since that's a big thing for them. Following that, hopefully the weather will cooperate, we will be inside. Just gonna sit back there and not say anything. We will be inside with a group from the Republican Party Group that's gonna do some education. I know that we supposedly will have some folks from the Pioneer Home that are gonna join us, and that will be a little bigger celebration than what we normally have, because normally it's just taking care of the flags. Now we're gonna do a little education. So thank you for this, and we will post it proudly.
That's a quick remark. We've got over 400 flags for disposal this year. And so if anybody has any flags, there's a collection box in front of the American Legion, or you can give it to a Legionnaire that will drop it off. So thank you.
Well now we'll move on to our favorite part of your meeting, Persons to be Heard.
I'm so sorry, I don't know how to announce this. Is it, was it you? Yeah, okay.
Thank you. I'm Benjen Hauzer, the role I'm talked on program in our nation, so I'm going to just announce my form on 2017. I'm just here to ratify this agenda, appreciate your color, and also the heart completely taking care of our own told souls and standards of this procedure for Department of Defense. I'm the Bureau of Our Darn Affairs Chief. I've been in office since 1998, have been serving in Persian Gulf until 2018. And make it fair and clear. And now that we're here in North America fully soundly, you several means of our own toll token, the American Legion has given you a resolution for new business. We'll be discussing some information in Ketchikan. My father is the actual governor in China, Republic of China. He's very familiar with mindset, people, things, fashion, things. Branch Guard, his name on the floor. Grandfather, stunned last of a stock deadly than I. Also, he's just attended Ketchikan recently. We're starting to remind you that as my ownership of Ketchikan has not failed me, this mindset is established as very developed real estate, of which I have control and most supportive ownership. It is my side 18. We want you folks to enjoy our entertainment events on Ramadan, celebrating the freedom of curdery and from jurisdiction. We have my sponsor also, enjoys his Argentine Sargent. So we're very provoked, we're excited. And this Pledge of Allegiance is ratified, it's a formally appreciated that, so we'll stay up there.
Next up, we have Jamie Palmer.
Good evening, everyone, mayor, council, staff, speaking on behalf of myself, Jamie Palmer, and a business owner on the creek. As you all know, there's been some activity over there lately that's not very good for any of us here, for the community, tourism. Anyway, I have small children who love to run up and down the creek, and lately that's not something I allow them to do. There are a lot of people sleeping there, people that, you know, are quick to get loud and yell and feisty, and it's just not becoming that safe. I'm here to encourage the council to start really focusing in on that social services power that you have, and thinking about a way to amplify the services that we're doing for the homeless here. Maybe that's hoping more mental health service or I don't know how you do that. I unfortunately did not have time to research lots and lots of solutions to bring to you like I would have hoped to. But I do know that it's a struggle over there. My employees are 22 and 23 years old, and I always tell them not to walk the back way of the creek when they're done with their shifts, and I shouldn't have to. It's such a beautiful place, and it's so nice at night to just watch the salmon run or look at a seal, but lately it's just not safe for these young women or much of the town. So I was looking up the codes, and of course Title IX is titled Peace, Safety, and Morals. And if you start digging into those, it's, you know, you could just spin them all over the place with how we need to do better. I've heard from multiple business owners along the creek of issues over and over and over. And so I was sitting in my lovely little home and decided I should probably come down and speak and start to help be an advocate and a voice for all the business owners over there. Happy to roll my sleeves and help in any way when that happens, from chamberside or, you know, rallying business owners, whatever that looks like, doing research and all helps with it. Again, speaking on behalf of myself, but it could be something that all the governmental bodies start looking at together, because it keeps going, no help, lack of housing, everything. I appreciate you and all your time, and it looks like a pretty short one tonight, so.
Any questions, Ms. Moore? Thank you.
Hamilton, yeah, I'm sorry, Gellhar?
Gell.
Oh, Gellhar.
Yeah, hi, my name is Hamilton Gellhar, and I know that some of you have seen some pictures that I've sent to you guys via Facebook of homelessness on Creek Street, around Creek Street, on people's doorsteps. On the Creek Street Cabaret this morning, I took a picture of a homeless person encamped out right on the cabaret property, right in front of their doorstep. Who knows what she's gonna walk out to when she opens her door? I took a picture, this person lunged at me, chased me down the street, all the way to Parnassus, threatened me, and her, she's, I think she's been arrested, but she encamped last night in front of Ray Troll's place, right on his steps. You guys, some of you have seen some pictures. I know at least three or four of you guys. Yeah, I have two young kids, six and a nine-year-old, and I just dropped my kids off the school bus, and soon as I take five steps, I take a picture, and some, a homeless person attacks me. There's people sleeping and camping on Soho, Fohoke Creek Street Cabaret. Sam McGee's had an issue Cape Fox Lodge, the tram area. It's that, it's an area where they don't really have a lot of personnel. And when you make comments to these people, like you're not supposed to be there, they threaten you, they verbally abuse you, it becomes a racial thing, because they're, that is a heightened thing these days. There's an armed robbery, BB gun or not, there was an armed robbery on Creek Street of cruise ship tourists just Sunday. It's only Thursday. It's been a busy week for me, guys, real busy. We also have asked for more police patrol, but you know, to be honest, I wish Ray Troll was here. He's not, but if Ray Troll was here, he said he doesn't like coming to these events, because he doesn't like doing this, and I don't like doing it, but we've asked for police patrol, and I have seen, no, I, I heard the city of Ketchikan was employing somebody to pick up dog poop this summer for like 23 bucks an hour. And you know, like Jennifer Bolshakov, me, there's a lot of other people on Creek Street. We're even considering getting armed guard. Like, I don't know, if we can't get police patrol, how are we supposed to operate our business with open doors, people just flowing in and out? Somebody stole a necklace worth $400 from Andy, who's not here. He doesn't like coming to these events. He's Australian, he doesn't want to get involved with local politics. Anyway, so that necklace was traced back to being sold to a person who owns Ketchikan Apartments. You guys might know that person. Well, anyway, you know, Andy doesn't want to press charges, he's not here. He doesn't want to talk about the drug addiction, the homelessness, the mental illness, the theft. And it's June 1st, this isn't even 4th of July. It always gets the worst around that time. People camping on your property, putting up tents. I've seen hammocks on Cape Fox Lodge area. And I've heard, ever since the First City Homeless Shelter has moved to 632 Park Avenue, it's gotten worse. I know there's a pandemic, I know people are hurting for house, but people shouldn't be allowed and it shouldn't be tolerated that we're just allowing people to sleep on our doorsteps. It's on our doorsteps. And I don't know if you guys have ever had that, but it's not very fun, especially when you have kids and little dogs and businesses and whatever else. And I suggest that some of you guys consider an internal audit of this First City Homeless Shelter. Their lease is up in August, maybe, I think that's pretty true. That's according to some source of mine, and I think that's, it's got, I don't know what's gotta happen, but we need more police and an audit on that First City Homeless Shelter. Thank you very much.
Any questions, Mr. Houser? Thank you. Did anyone else want to address us tonight on any subject?
Lincoln says gay.
We promised not to bite.
Hi, my name is Lincoln Howzer. I own number 18 Creek Street, Hope Creek Gold, Sam McGee's. My family has had a store on Creek Street since 1987, so we've seen a lot of changes. This is probably, no, this is not probably, this is the worst we've ever seen in the creek in regards to homeless and trouble coming from sort of there. I've had property damage to my building. My employees don't feel particularly safe leaving in the evening, so I'm just asking that sort of, be done better. That's it.
I'm sorry, Lincoln, what was your last name again?
Howzer.
Howzer.
A U S E R.
That's what I thought, it's always good to ask. Any questions, Mr. Howzer? Thank you. Does anyone else want to address us tonight?
Sunay La, Gloria Burns, 1048 Woodland Avenue, Ketchikan, Alaska. I'm here just to speak regarding the conversation about moving books around in the library, and I would just like to encourage the council to consider, just in the same way that we honored the professionalism of the city manager to know what was supposed to happen, you know, as far as, as far as the drag queen hour, whether or not some of us agree or not. I would say that our librarians have been with us for a very long time. They're extremely professional, they're knowledgeable about community, they're knowledgeable about books, and I would encourage that the same kind of respect that we would give to that professional, that we would give to our librarians who have been with our community for a very long time, and continue to have that educational knowledge and the appropriateness in their spirit and heart. And that if we're gonna allow that to one professional, that we really think about those professionals and consider their worth and their training and their knowledge with the equal kind of validity. And I just appreciate all of you and the hard work that it comes to come to these decisions. And I know for myself, you know, when you sit on a board and everything, there's a really a temptation to get into the weeds. And when we put ourselves into those weeds, oftentimes we create for ourselves a situation that we can't go back from. So I'm just appreciative to all the work, and I respect whatever decisions you make, but I would really like you to consider that we have some really amazing staff at the library that really love our community, and I hope that we can uphold their knowledge and skills. And that's it. Thank you so much for your service.
Does anyone else want to address us? Okay, we will now move on. Gotta move fast.
Ms. Moran. Firstly, it grandly came here just to be a boy on the wall in the back, but I really wanted to thank you guys for your pride month proclamation. At which our mission is to build a community where everyone has the opportunity to live by its freedom. And that only is gonna happen if we treat each other with respect and on an equal plank. So when you make these proclamations, I think it is very important to support people, you know, support vision, continuing our mission, which is to support the entire community, so I thank you for that. As far as the homeless goes, I've been out of that for a while, but once a month, my family still hosts with the Presbyterian Church, the awards table. We serve 96 meals on Sunday. We have never served that many meals. So I don't know where the explosion in this population has come. It's been a little bit, you see, I haven't driven, paying attention, but when they say it's an issue, I think it really has, for some reason it really has. And we're, it might be time for us to another homeless survey. But yeah, homelessness is an issue, homelessness is an issue. But in a small community like that, so we've come together in the past and done good things, I'm sure we can figure this out too.
We will now move on. Senator Janet? I was going to suggest that we move items 7A, I'm sorry, 7B and 7C to consent. Unless anyone wants to discuss those two items. Okay. Chair, will you entertain a motion to consent? So we're gonna read the five items.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna do it to you.
Okay, sorry. A pivotal minutes regular city council meeting of May 23rd, 2023, accepting the procurement of support and maintenance from competitive bidding, written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code Key Site Technologies, purchase of 20 Panasonic toughbook laptops and accessories for CBWG for the Ketchikan Police Department, accepting the procurement of broad works lab services from competitive bidding, quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code VCG. Award of Contract Number 2319, multi-purpose vehicle for public works, division, bow and star forward, accepting the procurement of annual telephone switch platform software support and maintenance services from competitive bidding, written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, ribbon communications, accepting the procurement of fiber-to-the-home access platform annual software support and maintenance from the competitive bidding, written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, ADTRAN, Inc. Budget transfer amendment number three to contract number 1712, Tongas Sewer Forcement Rehabilitation Phase Two Design Stuffle Engineering LLC. Award of Contract Number 2318, baby cemetery maintenance and operations, budget transfer for fire department promotional testing. Resolution Number 232881, levying a general property tax for municipal purposes upon all meal and business personal property in the city for the year 2023, providing for the collection of taxes due in 2023, prescribing penalties and interest for delinquent taxes. Amendment Number Three to the agreement between the City of Ketchikan and the Ketchikan Gateway Borough for disposal of solid waste and collection of a non-area-wide community solid waste disposal fee. Award of Contract Number 2314, Ketchikan Police Department Exit Door Replacement, EK Builders.
I just have a question on number five. 5K, just to confirm, that is keeping everything the same as the previous year, correct?
That is correct.
Nothing has changed.
Yeah, nothing's changed.
Okay.
Other questions about the concession? Hearing them, for color.
Flora?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Matani?
Yes.
And again?
Yes.
Gas?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on, we have no unfinished business, and we have one item of new business, fireboat needs assessment. Chair, will you entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I move the city council director to Ketchikan Fire Chief to establish a committee of subject matter experts and stakeholders to develop specifications for a multi-purpose fireboat that will meet the maritime needs of our community.
Second.
Move the second. Chief, do you need to chat with us about this one? Or do you want to?
I would defer to the chief on this one. I know they did a lot of work with the consultant to get the fireboat assessment, needs assessment, and she.
Yes, it's been a long time coming. The needs assessment just confirmed what we know, we're a maritime community and we need a fireboat. You, by voting yes, will give me the opportunity to put together a group from the harbor masters and from the community boats and design a boat that's gonna last us hopefully the next 40 years, that's multi-purpose. And the purpose of getting the design done is to get pricing so that basically we have a shovel-ready product, if you will, as we start looking for grants or sponsorships from the cruise line agencies or some other bigger businesses in town. I, it's a big step forward, getting the committee and starting the process. Where it goes from here, we'll see, but I think there's a lot of potential funding sources that we're gonna be able to go after once we have a price and design and know what's gonna best serve our community.
Any questions for the chief and the manager? Thank you. I'll go to the discussion.
Just a broad question. Can you kind of speak to the committee that you want to form? I mean, can you specify on that, like, what kind of, who you want to pick ideas from and all that?
Well, some of the things, the harbor masters, right? They're our, really our experts. We want to make sure that we design a boat that gets easily in and out, but also all of our harbor master folks have a really, a wealth of knowledge on operating boats. And we want to give them the ability in an emergency to come and pilot our boat, or if they need it, to tow somebody, come and use it. So we obviously want them involved. We want some of our firefighters who've worked with the Harry Newell involved, so we don't build something that puts us back in a position where we were with the Harry Newell, size-wise, speed-wise, and function-wise. And then council member Flora had mentioned interest, and I think we'll find some other people in our community who have a lot of boating experience, just to help guide us.
Mr. Talon? What timeframe are you looking at?
I would like to have pricing and the design, hopefully by the budgeting process, so we can look at that. But I don't know if that's possible. I think realistically, if we have a boat design spec and pricing by the end of the year, I think that that would be quite a lift.
Thank you. Do you have questions for the chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion on the motion. Mr. Houser?
Just one thing that comes to mind, and I'm sure the staff is taking this on and planning this already, but one, I don't want to use the word complaint, but one thing that I heard mentioned that I think was kind of brought to our attention in years past was an issue with lack of maintenance, for whatever reason, on prior fireboat. And so, as I said, I'm sure staff is on it, but I just want to make sure going forward that we have a solid game plan with that, with figuring out whose responsibility it is to keep up on that and making sure we follow through with it.
Councilmember Gas, if I may, I think that it's important, when we design this boat, to make sure we, first of all, it can be serviced in Ketchikan, so whatever type of motors we purchase, we want them to be able to be serviced locally. And secondly, we do need to add a light item to the budget and put yearly maintenance costs in there. That's really important. You know, it's like owning a car. I mean, you have to change your oil in your car, you have to change the brakes, but if you don't have the funding to do it, then that boat falls into air repair pretty quick. So that's an excellent question.
Further discussion. We can call a roll.
And again?
Yes.
Matani?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gas?
Yes.
Okay, that takes, that takes care of our action items tonight, I'll look at for one. Approval of vouchers, Parnassus Books, $34.99.
Your Honor, I move for the approval of vouchers for NASTAS books in the amount of $34.99.
Second.
Moving to second, is there any discussion? The court please call will.
Gage?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Gas?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
And again?
Yes.
Matani?
Yes.
Motion passes. Manager's report, what have you got for us?
Mr. Mayor, Councilors, on housing, we set up another meeting with the Alaska Corporation for affordable housing. This is the entity that we're working with to do the housing coordinator grant, and hopefully we can bring in somebody who can actually implement our homeless list, homeless need study that was done earlier by the Alaska Health Trust. This one is gonna be for remediation and rehabilitation projects. So we've talked about things about upgrading like the path facility or other facilities, or even, I think I mentioned last time, once Bradbury brought up, what about upgrading some of our current rental properties in order to make them available for rent? So that's going to happen next week. I've actually got public works obviously involved, as well as the fire marshal, so we can talk about those needs. The budget policy, I'm hoping to have that to Michelle by the end of business tomorrow. I had to go back and make some changes based on prior council-approved policies to make sure they're properly referenced and lined up. So I would like to suggest a 6:00 PM work session ahead of the 7:20 council meeting. I'll try to get this policy to you, so you have plenty of time to review ahead of time, and then we can come in and make tweets and just have a work session. And then you can have an item at the meeting to approve the policy or to remand that back to, for adjustments, and then come back at the next meeting. So that would be my suggestion, if that's workable for the council. I did hold our first all-hands meeting for our staff on May 25th, and so this is an effort I'm trying to make in line with one of the council goals, to have better top-down communication. And what I did was meet with all staff and roll out what the council. And what I did was meet with all staff and roll out what the council has approved as its values and its vision statement. So as you know from the vision statement, our next step is to make those into strategic objectives and goals that are measurable. So I needed to roll that out to staff first, and that was a good first meeting. Something that I do with these is I will ask staff ahead of time, do you have any questions that you'd like me to answer? You know, nothing specific to yourself, obviously, but if you have an organizational question, let me know, and you can answer all hands meetings. The tourism manager will be interviewing in the next two weeks. Two candidates are from within southeast Alaska, and one is out of state. Congratulations to the finance department. They did receive an audit award for our fiscal year ended December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. This is always a year behind, but great job to that team. That completely aligns clearly with the core values of transparency and fiscal responsibility that the council has cast. I mentioned at the last meeting that we received our H E C funding for their mobile integrated health program. The hundred and fifty thousand will be used to pay salaries and create that program under our system. Some communities didn't take advantage of the money that they were allotted through the H E C program, through the Department of Health. And so what that does is any funds not claimed timely, they're opened up to everybody in the state. So we actually submitted three more requests for another two hundred and fifty thousand, but this would do is actually equip the team. One of the requests was for a specialty vehicle. We originally budgeted like fifty thousand dollars for an S U V as a response vehicle. This specialty vehicle could be used to actually have monitors, do testing. It was actually designed for COVID testing, mobile COVID testing units. So you have service chairs in there where we can actually provide services within the vehicle without looking like an ambulance or without, it's just, it's just a board van, essentially. Not a rear panel van, but a nice little minivan that just has a little bit more specialty equipment in it, so you can put heart monitors and things like that in there, in addition to your response team. So I'm hopeful that we'll see another two hundred and fifty grand, hopefully at most, coming into the city in order to start that program sooner rather than later. On the Salmon Walk project, it looks like we're on schedule to meet for this June twenty-fifth dedication event for the Salmon Walk. The only thing that's behind is the reassurance markers, so those are little markers telling you where you are within the walk, but the museum staff is already preparing to have laminated markers should we need them for the opening, but hopefully everything will be here on time. The panels and cells are already produced and ready to go. They were only waiting on specialty hardware, there were supply chain issues, but those should all be shipped and ready to go. So we'll be ready for that June twenty-fifth dedication. The burn home abatements, we're working on a couple more homes to apply that ordinance. Counselor Fissler was correct on the worker comp experience modification that will be going down on July first to one point one nine. And finance and the H R department, the safety, they'll be working on a memo to explain how that works for the council. I did look into the K V B lease, and the grant agreement is compliant by not having the building open on birth three, but the lease agreement does state that the building should be occupied during that time. So I met with Kara today, who is the new executive director, and she's going to talk to her board. It was what we were thinking, that the fact they don't have staff, she's got to hire three new staff members, she's got a position already open, and then two of her staff members are leaving. So she's got a challenge, an uphill challenge to hire people. She's going to talk to her board. What we discussed is if they don't plan to use it this year, then the city could take possession back, and perhaps we could use that either for a tourism manager or for some other use on ports and harbors. So she's going to talk to her board. If they have absolutely no intent to get there and have it open this season, then we can come back to the council to do an amendment on that lease in order to take the building back or remove it from occupancy for them. And I'm tweaking the spreadsheet that I'm tracking for all of your future items and priorities, so I just couldn't get it done this week. I apologize for that, but I will get it to the council. And I, obviously, there are other reports, and I stand for you.
Questions for Mr. Tull?
About the abatement of burn homes. We can place lien on properties, but the city will have to outlay the abatement expenditure upfront. So do we have to have an amendment to the ordinance to add that? So that we can place lien on these properties?
Oh, no. Okay, thank you, counselor, Mr. Mayor. The ordinance will already allow us to do that. The issue we have is we don't have a cash on hand. Well, we do. We'll have to dip into reserves. Let's say it takes thirty-five thousand dollars to do a cleanup, and I'm just pulling a number, I'm not saying that's what it costs. If it were thirty-five thousand dollars to abate a property, we have to pay that ahead of time. We can play a lien on the property, so if it's sold or anything that, or we foreclose on it, we can recover at that time. But there's going to be a time between outlaying for the cleanup and then recovering funds for the cleanup. And in my experience, I don't know how it is for Ketchikan, just based on my own experience, it's taken us about, there's usually a five-year gap between the outlay and then the recovery of funds, because you have to deal with first mortgage holders, or if the, if the property's not even mortgaged, getting the taxes taken care of, because there's lien orders, and I'm not sure where we would fall. So I've noticed, just in my experience, it takes about five years to recover. So we'll still move forward with the action, but if we want to be really aggressive about it, what I've done in the past is we've actually had a budget item of abatement and abandoned property funds, and we put a hundred thousand dollars in that fund, and every year we would rank our abatement properties and go after them pretty aggressively. So I think I've cleaned up like a hundred and ten thousand tires off of properties in using that method. So it's just something to consider. If it's something you'd like us to prioritize and make sure we have funds available, we can be really aggressive with the monies there. You know, of course, it'll recover, it just takes us a few years to get it back.
I mean, my only concern is the growing properties are an eyesore, and if we don't have the funding to take them out, they'll look like an eyesore, and I don't think we need that. So we've got to find ways to get this done and aggressively go after. Maybe we get the first lien before mortgage holders or anybody else, because they are really an eyesore.
Absolutely, counselor and Mr. Mayor, and it's a safety issue. You don't want anything falling down on one of our citizens. So we are pursuing two other properties, and then our aggressiveness as far as going after these properties is really based on funding. So the more money we have to do it, eventually it comes back to the city, but it takes the cash outlay of the front.
Well, sometimes it comes back.
Sometimes, right. That's true. In Alaska, we had grants, so our state isn't helping.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back on to the budget policy recommendation about a one-hour work session before a meeting. I, I, part of me does not necessarily agree with that, and the only reason I say that is this is a new process for us. There, I know I have a lot of questions in, like, creating these policies. I know we all, there's, you know, seven different opinions also on, you know, what policies go, or we should go with, we shouldn't go with. And I think for our initial first one that we've ever, ever conducted, and the, just the process of explaining how this is going to work now is probably going to take most of that meeting up, I would highly recommend or suggest moving it to its own work session night to where we can get a presentation of how this process works, and then allow us to discuss, okay, what are our policies, and be able to ask those questions and not be rushed into a meeting. We've done that before, and we've had epic failures, because usually you get one chance to talk, and that's it. And I think we've proven through other discussions, being able to have, I don't want to use the term banter, but that's the only thing coming back, but having that discussion between council members on why they think this way and not this way has become, shown that it's very helpful in that process. So I'd really like to see that move to its own work session, or its own night, so that we're not rushed in getting through that and we can understand the process. I know it's more time, but.
I think I agree with that. I had that underlined. I think an hour is not sufficient, because this is the first time you'll be going into it. We'll have a lot of questions as, when we go into the budget session, we ponder and question. So it, I think an independent work session for this topic should be mandated.
I just have another topic, if no one else wants to talk about that. So I just had a lot of questions on this baking fee summary report. I guess. I'm trying to speak my words appropriately. I, I, I'm thankful for the memo, I'm glad we reached out to some people, but I feel like there's still too many unknowns to just push this off the table. I have information from some of the institutions that sent it to the city. That information is quite opposite of what's in this report, and so I'm just a little concerned. I mean, it's very visible, it's been voiced before that not everyone agrees with our interest in looking at this. I understand that, but the directive was to put in a good effort into looking at this and giving a legitimate, you know, should we invest more time in this or not? And through this report, I'm just not seeing that. It's just not what I would like to see. There's a lot of unknowns, and through that, I would like to request the council to maybe, I don't know how to appropriately go through this, but to maybe go out for R F P. Some of the information I've seen is significant savings as well as investment opportunities for the city, and at this time, in our financial situation, I think it is prudent for us to entertain all of the possible ideas of how to increase revenue for the city in terms of investment and whatnot. And so I really think we should go out for an R F P and do this appropriately and get apples-to-apples comparison, as it says in here, which it's referenced that it's not. I think we're at that point, because I think it's important that we, we look at our local banks, and they do have a lot of good opportunities for municipality. Some of these banks, and so have other municipalities that they service. Believe it or not, our banks here in town aren't just one-offs. You know, they do work outside of Ketchikan for much bigger cities, much bigger areas, have a much bigger layout than what we're giving them credit for. And so I just want to say, maybe going out for R F P and really nailing this down, as it's been explained to me, and R F P is not a ton of work from, you know, getting out and getting, just receiving that information, it's more work on the people who do bid on that. But I think we deserve, or we, we should allow our local institutions and Wells Fargo to be able to, you know, show us what they have and see what's the best for, for the community. So I just really think we should go out for R F P and kind of get a little bit more appropriate documentation.
Mr. Tull?
I've talked about this subject over and over. I still, in this report, but I see we need much more of a savings, and the local banks might be able to provide that. From personal experience, I know for a fact Wells Fargo is very expensive. There are other ways where banks lower the rates, and we need to take that and, because four hundred and fifty thousand is a lot of money. We need to look at ways, and I think an R F P out there will really help us assess who is going to provide us with a better opportunity to save money.
Another topic, and we're just going to keep switching gears here. You know, I've, in this, I don't know if the city manager has this answer or not, but I've heard from a lot of community members about slow internet. I've witnessed it as well. It seems to be a major, it's not during cruise ship times, I just want to point that out, because I know that's everybody's go-to. It is slow during that, but that's because of the influx. But we're, I know, I'm experiencing slower internet, and a lot of citizens have been. And so I just didn't know if there, is there's an issue going on, or is there a reason on off, you know, when ships are gone, that the internet is not at its peak like it normally is? I don't know if, I know somebody in this room does know that, but we'll call them in.
Mr. Chair, Counselor Bradbury, we do know that we've had some outages south that have really pulled down some of the internet connectivity, and, yeah, I don't know if you want to speak to that, or you'll have better knowledge. I'm just looking at my emails.
Navy Dan Lindgren, if you would tell competition manager. We did have an outage, I forget what day it was, I think it was, you know, approximately a week ago. Typically, these outages are caused in Canada, as this one was as well. And so there's, there's certain portions of the network where we're kind of, like, our subsea cable, that has operated flawlessly, that has not been an issue. Between Prince Rupert and Prince George, there's only one path. So if that, if that path gets disrupted, which it has in the past, the most recent one was with the avalanche, then, you know, we don't have enough redundant capacity to, you know, to be able to, you know, if that path goes out, then we don't have enough redundant capacity. We do have some redundant capacity, so we're not, like, totally dead in the water, but it's definitely significantly impaired. Once you get to Prince George, there is also some redundant pass between Prince George and Seattle West, and where our pop is now. And so that is a little bit better, and that, in this instance, that's where the outage happened, in the most recent instance. And we're working on different redundancy options. One of the key things is, there's a project that City West is involved with, it's called Connected Coast, and it is a British Columbia-funded project that builds subsea fiber from Prince Rupert down to Vancouver. And that project's actually being constructed, when that is constructed, we believe that'll help our redundancy situation tremendously. We have, I have been talking with, with other carriers, you know, really G C I is the only other carrier that has enough capacity off island that could, you know, fully absorb our, our internet capacity going, going south. I haven't got to the point where I've got, you know, a deal with them that I could bring to you, but I have been having those discussions, and we're, there are other projects happening within the state that I think will, will improve our, our situation relative to redundancy, and that is A P and T has a couple reconnect grants, and they will eventually bring another subsea cable from, you know, and it will get to Ketchikan. So that will be another opportunity, we'll have to, you know, come up with some business arrangements to be able to utilize that, but I'm in discussions with them as well to try to address that. So that's, that's certainly something that, you know, is, is top of mind for, you know, K P U and me as far as, you know, addressing it. I mean, ideally, we'd have a hundred percent redundancy if we had a, you know, break anywhere in the network, we'd be able to reroute and travel somewhere else. Now, all that means that if there, if, we do have enough capacity, so if, if everything's functioning, which, you know, most of the time it is, you know, there should not be any internet slowness as a general rule, our peaks are generally going to be in the evening time when people are streaming video, so, you know, it starts ramping up six to that's kind of the peak time. And so if you are, you know, having some type of an outage, I would, I would encourage you to call our, our help desk, or you can call me personally, and if there's no outage, you know, we can look at whatever, what other, you know, items in your house that might be an issue. I mean, a lot of times we have, you know, as we've increased our internet speed, I mean, we're offering gig services, which, you know, no, that's, that's an incredibly fast service. So could be having something individual to your house, so I would just encourage you to help call our help desk. Some of the older modems won't, you know, won't be able to distribute that through the house, so there's, there's a lot of different nuances, unless there's an outage. We do have, we're, we've got plenty of capacity, and we're, actually, I'll, within probably the next couple of months, I'll be bringing a, a new City West agreement to you that will, you know, add more capacity for, you know, because the one thing about bandwidth is it's. the one thing about bandwidth is it always goes up. George's point.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor, I did look at last week, there was a fire, a forest fire that took out a line near Shaw and then a landslide near Vancouver.
And the others, of course, one time took it out and I think it was actually, they had an eagle strike or something. I don't know. It's nice to hear they have the same too. Any, I, I, I've been following in the, in the Rupert news about, about the subsurface of Vancouver. How close are we getting to that? Because it seems like every other month, something goes wrong. Very, very aging system that Canada has between like Kelowna and, and Rupert.
Yeah, that, it gets pretty complicated. That particular project, it, it's not just a direct subsea cable south. So it goes, and it stops in every little community along the way. And it's a redundant route. So one route goes kind of inland and one goes. I don't remember what, what the major island is there. But it hits all those different communities. So there's a lot of permitting work. I believe, you know, we're talking about the August timeframe right now, but I've, I've heard earlier dates that I've already slipped. So.
I actually have noticed the last couple of days with work with internet being an issue and I'm right on Jefferson and Third and I've noticed it bogging down even on my phone system and on my work computer.
Yeah. And so I, you know, if you want to, if you want to call the help desk or call me directly and we can open a trouble ticket and look at your service. Because like I said, there should, you should not have any, you know, it's either a subscribe speed or something happening at home or a device problem or something. You should not have any internet slowness, you know, other than, you know, something that's correct.
Is there anything different with Verizon? Seems like I've just noticed.
Well, Verizon, you have to remember that Verizon, so that's a wireless service. So there's cell, cell tower. So when we get all the cruise ship, you know, the cruise ship passengers in there, the network usage goes up tremendously. And so for that particular network during the middle of the day, when we have the tourists here, that's when you're going to see the most congestion. We have, you know, we're still meeting our KPIs, but it is just a lot of people. And we have, you know, I'll, I'll take that back to the team though. And we can look at that and see if we need to add more capacity because we have the ability to kind of capacity side.
Any other questions for this one? Thank you.
Thank you.
A different subject, not, not into the, the city manager, through the mayor. The homeless issues downtown, the homeless shelter. I called you about the mischief last, last night. I got some business tenants that came to see me this morning. They are concerned about their staff. Not only with that mischief that happened last night, but they, their staff is witnessing in that parking lot that we have and at the entrance of the shelter. Not the bad shelter. He's got that monitored very well that drug transactions are taking place. People are shooting up right in front of that shelter. Kids in that area. Bike during the day when the weather is good. Parents are concerned. I mean, a certain business just came to me and said, this has become, he's buying a building for two million, but this has become a slum area and a very, very dangerous area. Throughout Creek Street, this seems to be happening with the homeless issue too. But I think I would like to see Deborah Asper or somebody come and give us a report of how this can be controlled. It is a real issue for the Barton Street Brewery, the Legion. It is a real issue for kids in that area. And especially when the weather is good, they're biking and playing. They don't need to see that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor, I, I will reach out to Deborah to see if we can get an update from first the homeless on operations there. I would encourage anybody who calls you, please have them call the police department. You know, we, we need to hear those constant reports and even if they feel like I've reported it, I've reported it, just please keep reporting it so we can have officers out there. Obviously, the more times we have to respond, that's a deterrent in itself. If they know our officers are consistently responding, but we need to receive those calls. So please encourage to, to keep calling PD even if they feel like I've done it already. We, we still need to keep getting those reports, but I will reach out to her.
Mr. Gas.
Well, for the manager on that topic. So you may not have this information. I know you're not the manager of that facility, but on the topic that Jay mentioned, is there, I assume there's a policy that forbids any sort of, I know that there people are allowed to come there drunk, high, et cetera, but they're not supposed to be using any sort of legal substance. And I know it's not illegal, but I assume the policy would be to not be smoking in the entryway. Because I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, but since Jay kind of brought it up and it's an increasing problem. I just happened to be walking by a few days ago. And I don't mean to get off in the weeds, but four people sitting in the entranceway on chairs, right in front of the doorway, one employee, three patrons passing around a marijuana pipe. And I'm walking with my two month old daughter. And I hate to make this all about me because I really don't like when people do that, but there's a million other kids that wander there. And so just to add to what Jay said, I mean, it's, it's the never ending thing that we keep talking about. And I, I had mentioned this in the past, but I, I'm trying to think of a solution. There is no solution, but I want to bring up again that as we enter into the budget time next year, we may have to consider a discussion about basing our funding on a dry, you know, no drug, no alcohol period policy. I don't know if that's what we want to do. Might be a little extreme, but I think we have to do something. So I just wanted to give some more information on that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Gas, you're right. There is a policy. There are no substance usage allowed at that facility. So I will definitely bring that point up also. If Deborah called, but I do know that is one of their policies. They're not supposed to be using on site. You can't come in high or drunk, but you can't have it with you.
Mr. Flure. A little while, while back, when we were having a conversation on this topic up at the Tedferry Civic Center and we were talking about the city's powers of public safety via its, via its police department and its social service powers, which is largely financial on our part. And then the grant agencies provide their expertise to administrate those programs. So that being said, I have a request when we move into these pre-budget work sessions. If staff can come up with a number for potentially additional officers or additional funding for the enforcement side, which is really more of our core purpose as far as public safety goes. I'd like to see what they might anticipate as a cost. It's good.
There was a time when we actually ran the mental health program at Gateway. And I think there's something to be said about looking at the, the lack of programming that under the building that we have allotted to them. And whether or not they're actually meeting the expectations for that building. I know that a lot of the programming has gone away. The other, the other thing I think it's interesting because the day shelter when it was run up at the church here, I don't think we had half the problems. I don't know if this is a new group of people. I think there's a problem with how it's being managed. I'm just going to say it. We have a lease that's up in August and we need to seriously consider whether or not they're the right people running it. I'll be really brutally honest here because the shelter is run in the past without all the issues that we're having at this moment. It's only moved over a block. But I think that this needs to be seriously looked at. I know that people are being kicked out. We're talking a shelter that's supposed to be a non-barrier shelter. Which in some cases, in most places, getting someone kicked out of a shelter has to come down to the board actually kicking them out. You get, you know, kicking someone out for life because of his mental health issues. And when you, that's your majority of your clientele. There's some, that, there's some issues there because that should actually be a board decision. I understand the idea of making it a dry shelter. The idea behind having a wet shelter is giving someone a place so they have a, a time period to actually, and it's interesting because it does actually work is that you, you give them a place to stay, a place that's safe. And they usually will, the drinking and the alcohol come out. Tend to drop off. But they also have to have the steps in place and the, the help in place to assist them in getting off the alcohol and drugs or programming. And what I'm, what I know is that there's a lot of waitlist and people that are on, that have substance abuse problems, you know, if, if we don't have enough people to help them, that waitlist that there's, it's just a vicious cycle.
Is that for treatment?
Yeah, for treatment or, and just actually getting someone to that point. You have to be able to put them in when they are at that point where they want to go. But I think there's two things that need to be looked at. Whether or not they're the right people running that shelter. And whether or not Gateway is doing what they're supposed to be doing based on the lease agreement that we have with them having the building. Because one of the agreements is that they have to be providing services. But is that lease agreement, the, they just have to do the bare minimum to have the building? Or shouldn't they be doing the programming that they've started doing years ago when they got the lease agreement?
I, I will tell you, actually, council member Gage and, and mayor and councillors, I have it on the June 15th agenda for us to start reviewing the lease because even though it's coming due in August, if there are going to be any changes, I wanted to put it ahead, ahead of time. So I actually have it on the agenda with some changes that I've heard from councillors and suggestions over the last year of what we can do. So, so we're kind of, we're getting ready to renew that. But rather than renewing it as it exists today, I think we just need to do a whole new lease agreement with, with these items. But I will tell you, based on that lease agreement, it is very limited. It just says you will use this building to operate a low barrier shelter. And, and that's, and I'm paraphrasing, but I happened to read that yesterday. And so I do know it is very limited in the lease agreement.
I wasn't going to get on this topic until my member comments, but we are now on it. So I'll join in. I would really like to see a incident report or a a list of all the incidents that have been happening inside those walls. I'm hearing of deaths. I'm hearing of drug use. I'm hearing of alcohol use. I'm hearing of staff participating in these activities. I think there's a lot more going on in that building. Inappropriately, the, and it's become a party house pretty much. And I just would like to see, you know, what is going on inside that building? If they come back with no incidents, I have a lot of questions about that because I'm pretty sure our other staff could tell us there's incidents inside there that they've had to respond to. So I would like to see that. And two, I, I do agree with some statements from the other council members. It is getting out of hand at that, that facility. I do have a future agenda item that I would bring up later in regards to that. I don't think it's appropriate for us to wait until August to take care of something that is becoming a danger to the public. They're very aggressive. I unfortunately had an encounter with three of them this morning when I had to go into work early and it wasn't pleasant. And they were on my property, not even public property. So this is something that I think needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. And I do agree that I don't necessarily think it's people that are using the facility. I think it's the people managing the facility, not managing it. So I would really like to see that sooner rather than later. And I'll talk about it more in a minute on that.
And, and the lease, it is good for the 615 meetings. We could have a discussion.
Other questions regarding the management?
Just one thing, not so much a question, but it was an earlier topic from Mr. Matani. I wanted to make a comment on on the topic of abandoned slash fire damaged properties. Full disclosure, I own a property that has a abandoned and partially fire damaged building right next to it. So if we were to drop the hammer, personally, it would benefit me. But putting that aside, I am a little concerned with the idea of extremely aggressively going after these properties in the sense of putting liens or, or the city enforcing things, to use a quote, very aggressively. I think we should be a little more cautious with that. And I think we should have a, a deeper discussion before we go ahead and give that nod, kind of get more input from the council because that is something I kind of, I mean, obviously there's two sides to the coin. You have to have safety. And while I agree, it would be nice to get rid of all the eyesores in town. We do also have to remember private property rights, people's ownership of their own private property. I don't want us to just come in very aggressively and just start foreclosing on places because we don't want the eyesore. So I just think we should have a, a little bit deeper discussion before we really start pulling the trigger on that.
A question for the manager. Do we have a policy for notifying the public about incidents with utilities or public safety? Is there a written policy anywhere?
Like if we have a downline or?
If you have a downline, if they, tell them if something happens in Canada or you know, a unusual crime happens in our town. Is there a set policy on how we notify the public that these situations are going on? Since they reflect, one, our utility company, but also public safety?
Not that I'm aware of. I know, like when we have a down electric, something happens with the electrical system and it's going to impact customers. There's an outage. Obviously, we have reporting requirements, schedule the outages. We do have our own internal SOPs on wanting to notify the public. But I am not aware that the city has a notification policy, like for any, an incident notification policy, which is typically what you do. I know I've been talking to Kim about expanding her office from just customer service and the KPU side to doing an actual PIO role within her office and, and that's where it would be covered. But I'm not aware that we have an actual policy, a notification policy.
Other questions? I have one brief, brief one. I guess it goes back to what Mr. Matings mentioned, mentioned earlier. So there's, there's now a, a new business showed up on the other side of the tunnel here on that little rear parcel next to the tunnel.
You just found out what that was?
Well, I, I guess, I guess my question is, I, I'm old to remember that at one point the city had to remediate that property. Had to tear down and burn down buildings. Now somehow it's managed to get back in the original property owner, still has access to the property and is renting the space out. I, I guess I need to find out more about that because if we tore it down, we sure didn't get paid for it. And I can't, usually when that happens, we end up owning the property. And I'm hoping that we still own the property and then maybe, because I, I'm actually concerned now because I've seen people not looking for traffic and going back and forth across there. And I think we're going to have an accident there pretty soon. And I'm not trying to prevent people from using their property, but since we paid to remediate it, it shouldn't be their property anymore. Or at least that's how we're.
I didn't know we remediated it.
We tore down a couple of burned down buildings in that property.
Okay.
But the property owner refused to deal with it.
I will definitely.
So I guess, yeah.
I'll definitely be the attorney on that one. Because I didn't realize we, we remediated that property.
We did.
Okay.
We, we, yeah. We sure did. Anything else for the manager? Moving on to committee reports.
It's a laid on the table. If anyone has any specific questions, I'll try to answer them. If not, it's, I think it's pretty self explanatory.
Reports and orders? Clerk's file.
Excuse me. The only thing I wanted to point out is that we, the clerk's office updated the city council's rules and procedure. We included in those questions regarding potential conflict of interest for a council member if, when they're appointed to a board and commission for the city. Regarding potential conflict of interest for a council member, if, when they're appointed to a board and commission for the city. So if there's any modifications about, we can do that, otherwise we'll print them out and have those new ones available for you at the next meeting.
No signature, so I assume there's no file. Future agendas.
Um, well, the first one I think is pretty self explanatory. I would like to get a date on the books for the reschedule of Tuesday. I'm disappointed that it was canceled without. A date assigned, so that's number one for me is getting an actual date sooner rather than later. Um, so I don't know what I need to do to get that going, maybe we could have that by the end of the week.
We'll get some for you.
Anybody else? I would like a, a policy for notifying public about incidents coming forward to involve KPU and general government. Related to utility issues and public safety. So, um. I would like to. Bring forward that the first city, at first Haven homeless shelter. Be closed effective immediately. Um, until an audit and procedures can be done of inside that building. There's a lot of scary things going on there and it's not safe for the individuals using that facility at this point. Um, I'm very concerned about that, I have evidence that we could bring forward, but. Um, I think that needs to be addressed for the safety of the users of that building.
Ask a question to council member. Could that be combined with the, the agenda item that manager already had for six fifteen regarding the lease? Or is this, you say immediately, you can't take an action tonight because it wasn't on the agenda?
Six fifteen is fine, but what she's bringing forward is totally different than what I'm bringing forward, so. As long as both items could come forward, I mean, both need to be addressed, obviously, both two. Um, I am just concerned for the lives of the people that are using the facility. And what they're being subject to by staff members that are utilizing our building right now, I'm very, I'm just very concerned about it.
Thank you.
How would that work with us?
It's fair, councillors, I can put it as two separate items, or even if the council decides. We want to cancel the lease, we're actually in a holdover period, so. And Mitch explained it to me today, so uh. The lease was signed in August, however, the term of the lease actually expired in May because of the way it was written. So right now, we're in a holdover period of the lease. So we um, that, we're, we'll be in a whole new section and I, that was, I didn't understand it why we signed in August, but it went back, it was retroactive, but it had to do with the. The ordinance, the licensing ordinance, so right now, we're in that holdover period, so I could actually put it on the agenda. You just don't renew the lease, if you cancel the lease at that meeting, and I'll ask Mitch how to word that correctly in the agenda, so it addresses both either renewal or the cancellation. And that, that's how you would do it, if you cancel the lease, then, then the building has to be vacated. And I'll, I'll have to, I'll look at the lease and get Mitch's opinion on how that would all work.
Well, it makes sense to that now when the weather's, oh, I shouldn't say nicer, but. I mean, the whole point to that, having that facility, it came out of a warming shelter. You know, people were dying in the streets, so we had to have something. It's somehow managed to, as we know, morph into something entirely different than what the council intended. Yeah, if we could both have, I, I, I've not seen any objections to having those.
Give your hands.
Well, no, I don't know. I will, br- bring those back.
Yeah, since we're addressing the lease, it would be a, a good time to address, even con- commenting.
Other items?
Three is my limit. Self imposed limit, I haven't had any future agenda items, I really like, saved up twelve.
Your honor.
Yes.
I should have asked this during the manager's report, can I ask a question of the manager?
Sure.
This isn't, I'm not necessarily bringing a future agenda, but uh. Question I have, I tried to get ahold of the attorney, but I think maybe he's been out of the office or something, I'm not sure, but um, citizen reached out. Without trying to get in too much detail, citizen reached out and wants to, it's not something I agree with, but I told him I would follow up, would try to get him an answer. He wants to. Basically get an ordinance changed on. Accessing either Third Avenue or between Shombar Bypass or. Section of road from Park Avenue to Shombar to take us to or to the library, which by ordinance, he was told is no longer allowed. My question is just simply, uh, would an ordinance change of something like that require? A vote of the public, or is that something that the council can change? And again, I'm not saying I supported, I just told him I'd get an answer, so. How would that process go about?
It's in the code, it wasn't, I don't think it was a voter uh initiative, so it is a code change that the council.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for the manager? Or, who's got others? Mayor and council comments. Mr. Finnegan?
Thank you, Mr. Seaving, your honor.
No word?
Ms. Gage?
Yes, your honor. Um, I don't have a whole lot. I just wanted to, I, I see that the um. The red dress uh that went on, I didn't get to go out um this year and participate in it. However, when um the gang went out to. Retrieve the dresses on the last day yesterday, forty-seven of the dresses were stolen. I just want to remind people that this was an installation that represents missing and murdered indigenous. People in our community. And um stealing the dresses was extremely disrespectful. And very frustrating to me considering I, not all of the dresses, but I pretty much got all the dresses when I did the installation at the city park. One of the reasons we did that installation is the, growing up here and understanding that. Uh, many of these deaths, many of these um. Missing people have been swept under the rug. And I like to call it the pablubial rug of, um, we don't want to talk about it. There are areas in our community that um some people seem to think is safe. And some of us don't find, they were, they were never safe for us. Uh, Shombar Trail has a lot of lighting for a reason. It was well known as rape trail when I was growing up. I am fifty-seven and three more days, two more days, and I have never walked that trail. Ever. My mom never allowed me to. City Park was not a place she went alone. Growing up. There were thirteen girls raped on that trail. When I was growing up. I would request that if people thought it was funny to steal dresses for this event, that they return them. I don't know where to return them, take them to the mall. Drive them off with Judy for me.
Or bring them to our office.
Or take them, yeah, bring them to the office, um.
Or even, would, would we be open to donations also, if you want to donate other dresses to replace them?
Yeah, um, was kind of disappointing to hear. That this was the third year, we've, we've had other incidents um where the rocks with the names of individuals were thrown in. Thrown into the creeks and we had to retrieve them. But it was extremely disre- just disappointing and disrespectful. Other than that. I will be um heading south to get my new lane on Monday. So, and I want to thank Steve for the new ramp. So, thank you.
Ms. Bradbury?
Yeah, um, just want to say, wow, you know, what a month May has been for our community. I think I can vouch for a lot of people in the industry that. Wow, it's uh returned pretty uh, pretty strong, it's been a record setting May for tour operators and businesses, so. Um, I'm glad to see that and hopefully everyone is doing well and, and successful. Um, I want to give a shout out to the fire department. Had a long week of incidences at work and they have come to the rescue on all of them, including just. You know, a couple hours ago uh for the latest one for me, so I really appreciate. Uh, I know I, they came with a split team even because they were already out um on other calls and. Um, rushed over as soon as they could. Um, I mean, I, I work right next to the fire department, so you can definitely know when they're not in their, their home there. Uh, so I really appreciate that, it was a fast response even while attending to other patients. Then I also want to say uh, just some more information on this homelessness. Um, you know, I've been trying to figure out where this influx is coming from, I'm, I'm friends with other. Collected officials in other communities in Southeast Alaska and um, I had a casual conversation with. With two individuals from other communities up north. That are roughly the same size or bigger than us. Um, and both of them kind of made comments about how they knew that. They were sending people down to us because of our facility. They don't want to pay for facility, so they're paying for tickets to get to our facility. Because it is known throughout Southeast Alaska as uh the place to go with no rules. And get fed and have new responsibilities and can get away with whatever you want. Um, and so I'm starting to wonder if that's where um a lot of these new folks are coming into town. Uh, this new group of folks are super aggressive, very, not super, they're extremely aggressive. Um, at all hours, day and night. I can vouch that I'm harassed every day by homeless folks that are on my property at work. Or um walking down the uh promenade or i- it's getting completely out of hand. And it, it seems to be a joke to that, that population of what they're doing to people. There have been incidences um of youth witnessing sexual acts on the streets. Drug use every, you know, in that corridor. It, it's just not, it's summertime, people are out and about and it is really, it's really unsafe for. The, the general public at this point, and I'm not saying it's everybody who uses that facility. There are some really hardworking people that are just down on their luck, that are out there working every day and just using it for the purpose that it is. But there is a large group there that is not using it for those purposes. They, I don't even think the facility we have can handle all of the folks that some other Southeast communities have sent us, that's why I think they're on Creek Street. Uh, I think that's why they're camping in my area now again. I mean, the police work so hard to get them away from our area, we went. Three and a half years without having to call the police department because of it, and now it's a regular thing again. So uh, it's real, it's happening, I'm, I'm not do, taking hearsay or anything like that, I'm. Personally hearing this stuff and seeing this and being a victim of uh some of these incidences that they, they are uh doing. And it is not a lack to our police department, like, there's only so many police officers and I think that aggressive population right now. Is outnumbering our police department and our fire department collectively. So I, I don't want to say that's, you know, our public safety is doing what they can, but it is far beyond what they can handle at this point. The other thing I wanted to say, and I hate to be so negative today, but um, I'm just getting really frustrated because. I feel like there's a lot of pushback from. Staff on new ideas and thinking outside the box, we went through a phase where. People were open to looking at ideas and suggestions. And I feel like lately, that is not, not the case. We sit here at the table to not just represent the employees of the city, but also to represent the citizens. Of this community of all facets. And the citizens do have questions, they do have ideas that maybe we haven't thought of, or they do have. Solutions that might be worth looking into, I'm not saying every solution is great, but I think it's worth giving the citizens. To look into, you know, an idea. And I understand that not everybody, I mean, I don't agree with everything that the council, you know, goes on, but that's why there's seven people and you vote and that's what we go with. But I think that also rolls over into our, the, the staff side as well is, we might not always agree with. The directive or the suggestion or um a, a possible solution. And I just want to encourage everyone to really be open to those. And to remember, even as an employee, we do all still work for the citizens of this community. And we need to take that into mind when we're making decisions um and stating opinions and. About community members or about community businesses and without actual evidence or facts. Um, I just, I hear a lot of comments about our, people who pay our taxes to make sure we can pay. Um, you know, everything and do these projects and I'm just getting super frustrated that it's coming out, you know, on behalf of the city anymore. Um, because I don't believe that's what everybody believes in the city and I. Well, I know for a fact it's not what everybody believes in the city, but we need to remember when one person does speak. Um, and the comments they make can be very detrimental to our citizens. And that also goes for us when, you know, I've been, I've been at fault for this as well, making a. An assumption or a comment that did affect citizens and we just need to be mindful that we shouldn't be putting down. Businesses or citizens or um nick saying any solution that somebody else might come up with that might actually be a good idea. So I just want to say that and I'm not targeting anyone by any means, I'm just saying in general, there's been a lot over the last three or four months. Negatively coming out of the city on behalf of citizens in our community and I think it just kind of needs to get under control.
Mr. Matani?
First shout out to the police chief for reaching out to those businesses on Creek Street and spending time with them and explaining things. How to move forward, shout out to the manager for responding very quickly last night on the mischief that happened. You know, the Legion and Bottom Street Brewery. I hate to say this, but as a body. And as the workforce of the city. We need to refrain from things on Facebook about tourists or even as a joke. Because it does come back to reflect on us. Also. We need to. Always go through the manager if we want to address a department or staff. Other than that, thank you very much.
Mr. Gass?
Hope everyone was able to enjoy a good Memorial Day weekend and have time to remember what it's all about. It's out of town, so I wasn't able to attend, thank you to the mayor, paper, recording any events, so that's good. It gets that, always a great kickoff for the summer, but good to take a moment to remember why we have the day off, so. Appreciate you being there for that. On the. What seems to have turned in the topic of the day of the homeless issues. Not to beat the dead horse, but uh, you know. Think we need to listen to people who are being affected by this. I wasn't aware of it, councilwoman Brad Barry just shared about other communities sending folks here, but. If that's true, that's uh very, very concerning and it would make sense as to. How is this population all of a sudden increased so much? I don't know of shutting down, just quickly closing it, I don't think would be the answer for the long term, but. Some drastic changes I think do need to be made. As far as the shelter goes and then more broadly for the enforcement side and other things that have been mentioned, so. I just feel bad for the people who are harassed or intimidated or have their property damaged and, and. All those things, I mean. While we have to be compassionate for those who are unfortunate, we also owe it to the members of the community who are not living that lifestyle. Provide a safe and uh welcoming neighborhood or public area in front of their business for them, so. It sounds like we're all on the same page that there's a problem now, we've got to figure out how to fix it. So hopefully we can all work together on that, uh, moving forward. And other than that, that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
There's more?
Nothing to mention.
Couple of quick things. First of all, thank you to staff for getting the, uh, the the ramp in. I'm sorry, Councilmember Gage, that took much longer than it should have. Also, uh, actually, I was speaking to the deputy clerk recently about about the resolutions we do and and what things we have, we have yearly resolutions on. And we're looking at things to, she actually had the great idea about the Flag Day one, that was one that we hadn't done before. And actually, if you guys have any ideas about things you would like to see us do resolutions on, let her know or let me know. Because I think there are more ways that we can, we can reach out, and that that's a, it's a good way. It doesn't require a whole lot of effort on our part, but recognizes people in the community in a good way. So if there's anything, any, any groups or individuals, uh, let us know. Yeah, I think that's it.